I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome you to the meeting of the College Station Independent School Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance. We have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or an upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting, and as such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are very pleased that you've taken time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest and support of our students. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Dr. Yocan. We'll begin this evening with our pledges to the American flag, Texas flag, and a moment of silence. And we have great kids from Creekview Elementary School and from Spring Creek Elementary School to lead us and to introduce their students. We have the principals Jeff Daron and Stormy Hickman.
I have with me tonight Damian and Nora Clark from Spring Creek. Damian is a fourth grader at Spring Creek, and his favorite subject in school is math. And when he is not at school, he likes to play ice hockey and football. And his sister Nora is a first grader at Spring Creek, and she loves reading, and her favorite thing to do outside of school is to read.
And I have three outstanding gators from Creekview Elementary. First, we have fourth grader Cameron Newton, who enjoys math. He also enjoys playing basketball and football. We've got first grader Miles Simpson, who enjoys math as well and playing football. And second grader Cade Newton, who enjoys reading and plays football in the same team.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join us. (inaudible)
You guys can take a picture.
(laughing)
We have no recognitions.
Thank you all for joining us this evening. While we're resettling, we'd like to recognize the artwork that was provided to us to decorate the boardroom this evening by Creekview and Spring Creek Elementary and also by Southwood Valley. First thing we'll go to is the consent agenda. The items that are on consent are G, H2, J3, J4, J5, J6, and J7. Does anybody have anything they'd like to pull off consent?
I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
(inaudible).
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye. Aye. Motion carries six zero. We'll move on to E, board reports. Does anyone on the board have anything they'd like to share with the group?
I think I got the short end of the stick this month. I got to 10-3 last week. The Education Foundation-
You had the opportunity to really participate. Is that what you meant?
And it was outstanding.
(laughing) I mean, come on.
No, it was outstanding. Last week was the Education Foundation Grant Patrol. It was always fun. It wasn't my first time, but I always enjoyed that excitement in the kids and the teachers when the grants were passed out. It was $141,000. I think one of the things that also communicated with a few of y'all on was seeing some of the facilities that have gone on renovations and some of the new ones I haven't been to. I mean, it was really, really good to see some of our bond work, bond money at work. And as I mentioned, I think it's something that I think the board probably ought to do maybe once a year is go look at some of the facilities and look at the improvements. Me and Ms. Barrett did the personnel advisory council meeting, and that was exciting. And then yesterday, the intergovernmental relations meeting was pretty good and interesting in the fact that they talked about, the district attorney was one of the speakers and spoke about, I hate to use the word chaos, but the crowding of the courts and the different types of fences and stuff like that in different directions of to handle that. And then the, what do you want to call it, the thoroughfare program, they discussed that, which was in our newspaper this morning. It was very good.
Good. You've been busy.
I was busy.
Anybody else?
Mike Nugent had to leave early, but he asked me to relay some information about the Education Foundation also. Grant Patrol, like Michael said, he said over 60, over 60 board members? I don't know if that makes sense. Over six, oh, okay, foundation board members, donors, CSHS and AMCHS, Drumline Cheerleaders, mascots helped award 52 grants totaling $141,000, over $141,000. At 16 CSISD campuses, Education Foundation reached a huge milestone in $1 million in grants awarded to the district. He wanted me to let you know to save the date, the 10th Annual 50 Men That Can Cook, Friday, February 3rd at Brazos County Expo. And then he said, "Star Educator Program. Don't forget to honor your child's teachers, school staff with a Star Educator Award for a minimum $10 donation to the Education Foundation. Your honorary will receive recognition in the eagle, a Star Educator pin, and a congratulatory card identifying the donor. Flyers will be coming home or make your donation online at give2kids.csisd.org."
Good job.
I feel to mention, I got to play the drums, and if I ever go back to high school, I want to be a mascot.
(laughing) Thank you for that warning. Okay. Anything else? Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Dr. Yocan. At the workshop meeting earlier this evening, we did a number of things. One of the things we talked about was our legislative priorities, gave a draft look at those, and had a pretty rich discussion regarding some of the legislative priorities that this board is considering as we talked to our elected representatives for the 2000, in advance of the 2017 session. One of those areas that we talked about was the upcoming accountability system changes that are going to take place in the state of Texas. Starting in the 1718 school year, every school and every school district in this state will be rated as an A, B, C, D, or F. There's quite a difference for the state of Texas. However, we are not the only state that has made forays into A through F accountability ratings. We have an opportunity to have a community conversation regarding A through F accountability ratings, what it could mean, how have they worked or have they not worked in previous iterations in other states. So do want to announce an upcoming event that we're excited to have. Mr. John Tanner from TestSense.com will be here. John is a assessment professional who's worked in test design for decades for a number of different tests. He's going to be here on Tuesday, December 6th, at 6:30 p.m. at the Transportation Center. I'll say it one more time for those who are typing or writing down. That's Tuesday, December 6th, at 6:30 p.m. at our own Transportation Center to talk about the 16 other states that have tried A through F accountability ratings. He's going to talk about the design of the STAR test, how it's a test designed to rank order students and does not do a good job in evaluating or giving accountability ratings to either schools, districts, or appraisals for teachers for that matter. He'll be here for about an hour. We're excited that we've invited our two local House Representatives, and they have said that they will be there. We have folks from Texas A&amp;M coming. We've invited board members and administrators from surrounding districts to come as well. We'd like for this to be a community event, and we encourage folks in the audience or those watching online to come to our Transportation Center and listen to a little bit about what A through F could mean for the state of Texas. And so we're excited about that opportunity. Again, Tuesday, December 6th, at 6:30, the Transportation Center. And that's my one upcoming event I wanted to highlight.
Great. Thank you very much. Ms. Warren, do we have any hearing concerns? Thank you. We'll move on to item H1 and receive report on credit by examination. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Dr. Yocan. Becky Burkhart, our Director for Assessment, and she does a lot of things with various assessments. We think mostly of the work that she does helping coordinate the administration of the STAR test for all of our, for a vast majority of our students here. Another area that is in her purview is the credit by exam. There have been a lot of changes over the past several years that have really increased the amount of work and the amount of opportunities that our students have to gain credit by exam and for acceleration. She's going to present to us and talk a little bit about what some of those changes are and what that means for us at College Station ISD. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Ely, Dr. Yocan, and members of the board. I'm very happy to be here tonight to talk to you about why these programs are responsible for the credit by exam for acceleration. I'm going to start off giving you a little overview of what credit by exam is, what we're required to do under Texas Administrative Code, and then talk to you a little bit about the participation of our students in the program. First, credit by exams for acceleration are tests that students elect to take so that they can skip either a grade level or a course. Districts under Texas Administrative Code are required to provide testing during four windows of time. Our major scheduled testing occurs in May and June and July, but we actually keep our windows open, and we work with students during the other two windows anytime there's a need, just work with families when they have a credit by exam need, and then outside of our regular May, June, and July testing dates also. So we really never close our windows. Districts are not permitted to charge for exams, and currently, the exams that we order, when we order in bulk, are $23 per exam. Districts are required to publicize to the community this opportunity for students, and we email all of our College Station ISD families, and we advertise on our College Station ISD website, we send paper notices home to campuses, and then we hold informational meetings for families. To be able to accelerate, students are required to score 80% or better on the tests for, any test for grades one through 12. In 2013, this changed from 90% to 80% during that year. There are two state vendors who write and score our tests, Texas Tech University ISD and University of Texas High School. We use Texas Tech University ISD because we found that their tests better match the state's standards, and so that's our preference. And then, beginning in 2014, credit by exams were no longer available for Algebra I, Biology, English I, English II, or U.S. History because of new requirements. And I'll talk about those in just a minute. Okay, so we have a lot to celebrate with growth of credit by exam program in our district. From 2014 to 2016, we've doubled the number of students who take credit by exams and doubled the number of tests. Many students take more than one test. That's why you see a larger number. And then proportionally doubled the number of students who pass those tests. Of these 325 students, what test do you think they're taking?
Health.
Okay. These 306 of the 325 students took these tests. The first tests that you see in green here are tests to test out of full grade levels. And so students, our kindergarten process is a little bit different, but in grades one through five, students who want to test out of an entire grade level take four exams. And so they take English Language Arts reading, mathematics, science, and social studies, and have to score 80% or better on all four of those exams to be able to accelerate. We don't have very many students who can do this. This is a pretty tough standard. And what's interesting, when we look at the scores of the students, sometimes it's the social studies test that keeps them from progressing, but they are required by law to meet all, make 80% or better on all four. Where we've got our big interest in the district is with mathematics. And so fifth grade mathematics is our biggest testing, our big participation of students here. The students are required to take one test to skip grade five, and we had 98 students last year who qualified to skip grade five. We have a good number of grade six, seven, and eight students, and we're starting to have some interest in students testing out of grade eight science so they can take biology as eighth graders. And so starting to get a few numbers there. Okay? So with all this interest in math, I want to show you, the district's been very, very responsive to the needs of students in moving courses into our intermediate and middle school grades so we could meet the needs of students on their home campus. In our intermediate schools, we offer a middle school class, seventh grade advanced mathematics at intermediate school. And then on our middle schools, we offer three high school courses so that children don't have to go to high school if they accelerate to a certain point. What this looks like, I wanted to show you, since this is the most frequent math sequence, students who test out of grade five mathematics take grade six mathematics in fifth grade, and they're grouped with their age peers. And this, the grade six advanced mathematics course covers all of sixth grade mathematics and roughly half of seventh grade mathematics. And then in sixth grade, the students take seventh grade advanced mathematics, again on their intermediate school campus, and this covers the remaining seventh and most of the eighth grade standards, enough that they're then able to take Algebra I pre-AP as seventh graders, geometry pre-AP as eighth graders, and then as ninth graders continue their mathematics sequence. So they take calculus their junior year, either AB or BC calculus. Okay? We have an opportunity now, children who take BC calculus their junior year and score a four or five on their AP exam have the opportunity now to take a class that's taught by Blinn professors on our high school campuses so that they can accelerate their mathematics and take calculus III one semester and linear algebra another semester. So that's an opportunity. We have about 15 students in the calculus III class currently. Okay, so with all this acceleration, do you think our students are doing well? They're doing really well. In 2016, we had 48 students in seventh grade who took Algebra I pre-AP. 100% of those students passed their Algebra I EOC, and all but one scored advanced academic performance on that test with an average score of 93%. We had five students who took Algebra I pre-AP in their sixth grade year. So those children accelerated four grade levels and took it their sixth grade year, and 100% passed the test and scored academic, advanced academic performance with an average score of 96%. All right, so those are, they're really, really good things, but we've got some challenges naturally. With increased testing, we have increased costs. So we've almost doubled the cost of our tests per year, and we've a little over-doubled the Proctor cost because of some special circumstances where we're testing children who may need smaller groupings or, you know, different situations. And so we're hoping that with our Proctor cost, we can reduce this a little bit. We're getting some interest from families to offer the grade five mathematics test and perhaps the six through eight mathematics tests on the home campuses during the last two weeks of school, and so they can be administered at the school. Parents wouldn't have to do that if they preferred to wait until June or July for testing, but it would give a large number of children the opportunity to test then without having to come back in the summer and then perhaps reduce our Proctor cost. There are also implications for testing out of subjects that are only offered at the higher grade level campuses. Those students who, I showed you, were taking eighth grade science to test into biology, those students have to schedule with their middle school and the high school to be able to do, to take that biology class at the high school. When students do that, they usually have to miss one elective because of the time it takes to go back and forth between the campuses. There are also, the transportation for those students also is the responsibility of the There are some changes coming up under the legislation that was passed in 2013. By 2018-19, credit by exams have to meet these requirements. They have to cover all the teacs for the course. They have to be equivalent to state assessments in terms of content coverage, item difficulty, and technical quality. They have to be externally validated, and they have to yield comparable results for all student groups. This requirement for Algebra I, Biology, English I, English II, and U.S. History was backed up to 2014. And so students, or these tests had to meet those requirements back in 2014 for these tests to be offered, and the vendors have not been able to create those tests yet. And so these are still not offered. And then late last summer in the testing season, they pulled grade seven and eight health from testing because the audit showed that they did not cover all teacs for the course. So we don't know in the future, as they audit more of the tests, how many courses may be pulled from offering or whether or not the vendors can meet the new requirements.
For clarification, when you say that they pulled Biology, Algebra, English I, that line, it was because of?
Back in 2014, these requirements for any course that had an end-of-course exam attached to it, the requirements had to be made for those courses by 2014.
Okay.
But all the other courses were supposed to, they're supposed to be able to wait until the 2018-19 school year.
Okay.
And so with increased rigor, this could affect the number of students who pass. We don't know. And so, but these are things that we're watching that are coming up.
Okay. Thank you.
So this time, I'd like to answer any questions you might have.
That's amazing that there's that many students that are that far ahead in math. And that's great. Thank you for the summary. Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Harris?
I have a couple. One, I want to commend Dr. Wesson for not making a joke about the University of Texas High School. So, nice job there. And when you say-
It was this close.
I know it was. I could see you. You were about to jump in. In particular, I wanted to ask about the fifth grade-
Yeah.
-math. Is there any thought that those numbers, or I guess asking, did they jump when we did away with, whoops, sorry, fifth grade advanced math?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
There's also, and this is, we try to communicate to parents a lot, there's also kind of a misconception among parents that students not access calculus their senior year without skipping a grade level of mathematics. And so we really, really are trying to get the information out that it is not required. In fact, I was talking to a high school math teacher today, and she said, "Oh, my goodness." She said, "It really worries us, and they're starting to hear children come back." Children who finish calculus their junior year and don't take calculus-
That's my next question.
If they take statistics. You know, it depends on your degree path, of course, but many students take calculus again when they start university. And so what the high school teachers are saying is that students are coming back and saying, "That's the worst thing I ever did." And so the high school teachers say, "Really, what's strongest is to take AB, which is calculus I, your 11th grade year, and then take BC, your 12th grade year, so that you keep that calculus growing, you keep it really strong." That's what, that's what they say students are coming back and telling them.
Okay. So you can take AB and then BC?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you can.
Well, there's a lot of students, when they go to the school, it seems like having one that just went through it, that then they, even though you've taken it, a lot of the universities are suggesting you take it over so that you get that.
Right.
Because to go into calculus III and the rigor and the lack of support that the students get, it's difficult for them.
Exactly. Now, most of our students, so we do have, you know, AP Statistics, but most of our students take that while they're taking pre-calculus and go ahead and do that during that year. Okay?
Yeah. I have a child who's on that right there, and my big concern was, you're not taking a year off math, so.
Exactly. Don't let him.
I will not. So, thank you.
He will be now AB.
He will be quite disappointed, so if he's watching.
He'll be now AB and BC.
I mean, he'll have lots of choices.
Yeah. Or, or accelerate and go ahead and take calculus III. I mean, you do have to pay for that, but it's very reduced cost, you know?
Can we move as a board to make well, take?
(laughing)
It's out of our purview.
It's out of our purview. Thank you.
Sure you can.
Does anybody else have anything?
Thank you very much for that summary. Appreciate it.
Becky.
Okay, that's all. I got, um, J1. Consideration approval and, consider approval resolution approving the purchase of property and construction of the new building at the Brazos Central Appraisal District. Dr. Ely?
Madam President, members of the board, what we have before you this evening is a resolution approving the purchase of property for the Brazos Central Appraisal District. You, members of the audience, will, may not know that we are represented on that board by two representatives for the school district's interest. One of those individuals is John Flynn, who gave us a presentation at the workshop this afternoon, and Tim Jones as well. I don't see if Tim is still here. We have other members of the appraisal district. Mark Price, chief appraiser, is here. Billy Rowe, who's also on the board, is here as well in support of this. So what we have before you is a resolution for the purchase of property and the construction of a facility for the Brazos Central Appraisal District. We are the fourth of five local taxing entities to consider this proposal. Mike has relented and sat down as I go on and on, so I'll let him stand up, and he'll finish all the holes that I have left.
It is administration's recommendation that we approve a resolution that Dr. Ely just referred to.
Does anybody have any questions?
All right, Dr. Yocan, I will be more formal. My apologies.
Well, no. I think you're good, Mr. Martindale. Thank you.
I make the motion that we remit, that we approve the College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees attached resolution for the new building for the Brazos Central Appraisal District. Do I have to read that?
No, you're fine.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Well, before we vote, I want to thank our representatives on that board. So thank you very much, and thank you for the time you put in on behalf of our district and our students. That's all.
Okay. Anybody else? All those in favor of the motion before us say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries six zero. And thank you for your patience with us getting to a point where we felt comfortable approving a resolution. So thank you for your work. Move on to J2, consider approval of the request for bid 17-01 to purchase computer workstations for career in technology- one to purchase computer workstations for career and technology classrooms at A&amp;M Consolidated High School and College Station High School for AVANEX in the amount of sixty-nine thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents to be paid using Perkins Federal Grant Funds. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Dr. Yoken, and members of the board, as our career and technical education offerings continue to grow and evolve, we have the opportunity to support them with technology, and we have, do have needs at both A&amp;M Consolidated High School and College Station High School for additional computers. And with more information on that item is Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Dr. Yoken, Dr. Ely, and board members. The Technology Department did identify the need for additional computers at both A&amp;M Consolidated High School and College Station High School in our career and technology labs. Therefore, a request for bid was prepared and mailed to twenty-three different vendors and advertised according to state bid laws and district policy. Sixteen of those vendors responded to the request for bid. Received bids were evaluated and scored by staff members from our Technology and Purchasing Departments. The sixty-nine thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents bid number one from AVANEX for Hewlett-Packard desktop computers and monitors received the highest matrix score based on the criteria in the reference for bid. It is administration's recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve the purchase, pre-imaging, and delivery of the HP computers from AVANEX for the amount of sixty-nine thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents to be paid using Perkins Federal Grant Funds.
Thank you.
Dr. Yoken, I'm going to abstain from all discussion and voting on this particular matter.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
I move we approve the recommendation as presented.
Can we have a motion to second any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries five and with one abstention. Thank you, Mr. Martindale. Move to K one, consider approval of the guaranteed maximum price, the total project budget, authorization for the superintendent or his designee to execute necessary documents associated therewith, and authorization to proceed with the work associated with purchasing warehouse repurposing Phase Two. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Dr. Yoken, members of the board. We have been in a growth, period of growth in College Station ISD for a number of years. Back in two thousand and nine, the voters of College Station authorized the building of the Transportation Center out at the corner of William B. Fitch and Rock Prairie Road. In two thousand and thirteen, the voters authorized the building of a purchasing and warehouse facility out there as well. The, that infrastructure is, will allow us to be able to grow up to our anticipated buildout of twenty-five thousand students. It also left some facilities over here at this current location available for repurposing and use in different capacities. So part of the two thousand and thirteen bond was a repurposing and refurbishing of some old purchasing and warehouse space to be used for some different types of uses. The first part of that was approved by the board a few months ago, and that was the server room that's going to go across the ditch in the old transportation, now old purchasing building. We have before you tonight Phase Two of that, which is basically a repurposing of the warehouse, which is just behind this building, across the breezeway. And one of the great things that we will have out of that is we will have a new boardroom, it will be much larger and useful for us as a part of that project. So with more information about that project is John Hall, Executive Director for Facilities. Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Dr. Ely, Dr. Yoken, members of the board. So back in November two thousand and thirteen, College Station ISD voters passed a bond issue for eighty-three point five million dollars for new construction and renovation to district facilities. One of the projects identified within that bond package was to renovate and repurpose current warehouse and purchasing building project. And this agenda item represents the work related to preparing the GMP and total budget for renovations for the second phase of this work for this existing facility. The GMP for the purchasing warehouse repurposing Phase Two project was based on requests for competitive seal proposals, or RFCSP, which was advertised to the public as required by statute. Our construction manager at risk, Pepper Lawson Construction, coordinated the competitive seal proposal process for this work, and Theo Rouse and I were present as proposals were received and tabulated on October twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen. In consultation with CSISD and VOK Architects, Pepper Lawson Construction has reviewed the final scope of work, reputation of subcontractors, quality of materials specified, and other relevant factors in arriving at their GMP for the project, which is proposed to you now in the amount of three million nine hundred twelve thousand two hundred and thirty-seven Have included a summary of the proposed total project budget listed, and would like to point out that our original planning allocation for this project, after we approved, after the school board approved the new server project, was four million six hundred sixty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. We found ourselves slightly over budget on this project, and we had cut all the scope out of it that we wanted to, so we were faced with having to find another five hundred ninety-five thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars to increase our budget, which we did, we found that out of two thousand and thirteen bond savings for some, from some previous projects that came in under budget or were closed out with some savings, which gave us a revised planning allocation for this project of five million two hundred sixty-one thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars. You can see the rest of the listing for the GMP for the purchasing warehouse at the three million nine hundred twelve two hundred and thirty-seven, as well as all of the soft costs listed out with their corresponding prices, for a total proposed project budget of five million two hundred sixty-one thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars. And of course, since we had to find some other funds to pull over to make up the balance for that, we were not able to realize any savings for this particular project. So it is recommended that the Board of Trustees, College Station Independent School District, approve the guaranteed maximum price of three million nine hundred and twelve thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars from Pepper Lawson Construction, and the total project budget in the amount of five million two hundred sixty-one thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars for the purchasing slash warehouse repurposing Phase Two project. It is further recommended that the superintendent or his designee be authorized to sign any necessary documents to implement the guaranteed maximum price, and that the Board of Trustees authorizes the commencement of work associated with this project. And with that, I'd love to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, does anybody have any questions?
Roughly how many square feet would, does this involve back there?
Twenty thousand six hundred square feet.
I just want to confirm that the new boardroom, it's an open space like this that's, can be used for multiple purposes?
Correct, it's basically two spaces about the size of this current boardroom with a big partition through the middle of it, so it roughly doubles the size of this one to about thirty-three hundred square feet.
Okay, we contemplate seating similar to this?
Moveable furniture, yes. No dyes.
Thank you.
And hopefully you all had the opportunity to take a quick look at the diagrams I had sent out in...
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I mean, I think it's worth noting, I mean, we've grown considerably as a district for a long period of time, and our administrative space has not grown with it. It doesn't take a whole lot of walking around here to realize that we're pretty cramped, at least from an outsider's perspective, as much as an outsider being on the board I can be, I guess. You know, I think this is well, well-deserved and well, I think will allow us to be more efficient in a lot of ways with things that are commensurate with the school district of the size that we are. So we, I think we all know that we're very, very cramped for space in a lot of areas in this district, and I certainly think that this will allow us to have more education for the public, more meeting room to be able to do things, doesn't take a whole lot of, some of our more popular board meetings, to realize that this gets to be exceptionally cramped. You know, I have heard from a good number of people who have tried to attend popular board meetings in the past, who walk up outside our doors and say that it was clear that there was nowhere to sit, that they were going to stand, and they turned around and left. And to me, that is something, if we can keep that from happening, is very much in our best interests. I think there's probably things that we have not done on purpose for lack of a space large enough to accommodate those kinds of things, so it seems like a well, very much a worthy project, in my opinion.
Any other discussion comments? Do we have a motion?
I move we approve. How's that?
Any other comments? All those in favor of presenting the motion as presented, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? The motion was carried six zero. Thank you. We'll move on to item K two, consideration, consider approval of the inter-local agreement between the City of College Station and the College Station Independent School District for the School Resource Officer Program for the two thousand and sixteen seventy school year. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Dr. Yoken, members of the board. At the workshop this afternoon at five o'clock, we did discuss school resource officers, and we have this item for your approval, consideration and approval this evening. This has to do with our current agreement with the City of College Station to provide school resource officers at our current middle and high schools. This would be a continuation of the same terms of a previous three-year agreement, which in broad strokes consists of College Station ISD providing seventy-five percent of the funding for salary benefits and equipment for those officers, and the City of College Station providing twenty-five percent. This is a one-year agreement for this school year, and the idea, I mean, would be that we'd be moving forward with different opportunities to meet our school resource officer needs in the future. So with that, it would be the administration's recommendation that we approve this inter-local agreement for our current year with the City of College Station. And with more information and the resolution, Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Dr. Ely, Dr. Yoken, members of the board. I think Dr. Ely covered most of the information pretty well there. We do have the attached inter-local agreement resolution. I can read through, through the entire resolution if you'd like, or we can, we can approve it as included in the memo?
Thank you so much for that offer, but I think we're fine. Thank you.
Wait, the meeting hasn't been long enough, let's do it.
No, no.
We approve the attached inter-local agreement.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the resolution, the motion resolution, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? So the resolution is approved, six zero. We could talk about something else, the high school students don't get off so early, but you all really chose a good, and you need to pass it along, November, December's a good time to come, because some of them get really long, so with that, we're adjourned.